Council President, we're ready to go.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the President of the Minneapolis City Council. I'm going to call this regular meeting of the City Council for March 27th to order. As we begin, I would like to note for the record that this meeting does have remote participation by members of the City Council and city staff, as authorized under the provisions of Minnesota Open Meeting Law, Section 13D.021, due to the declared state of local public health emergency, which was proclaimed by Mayor Frye on March 16th. I'll remind my colleagues that they will need to queue in the chat feature, so just put your last name in the chat feature to be recognized to speak. When you're not speaking, please be sure to mute your microphones. That will help us avoid background noise. And we really appreciate everyone's patience, both my colleagues and members of the public, as we adapt to this new way of conducting business. I know many across the city are doing the same. So this time, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll, so we can verify the presence of a quorum for this committee, for this meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich is absent. Fletcher is absent. Jenkins.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Cunningham.
Present.
Ellison is absent. Goodman.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 10 members present.
There is a quorum for today's meeting, and we may have the other council members joining in. Colleagues, the agenda for today's meeting is before us. It's also available for the public online in the LIMs system. If there's no objection, I'm going to move to amend the agenda to take up new business first, prior to our committee reports, because that item has a significant impact on our future operations and could affect actions taken by the City Council during this meeting. So this would be taking up first the adoption, consideration, a potential adoption of the new operating structure and modified meeting calendar, so that we're clear and clear for the public as we move forward throughout the rest of this meeting. Is there any discussion on the motion to amend the agenda? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll to adopt the agenda as amended.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich is absent. Fletcher is absent. Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami. Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison is absent. Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries, and the agenda is adopted as amended. The next item is consideration of minutes from our regular meeting on March 13th and the emergency meeting held on March 19th, when we authorize the extension of the local state of public health emergency. May I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
That has been moved and seconded. Clerk, please call the roll on the acceptance of minutes.
Councilmember Palmasano. Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich is absent. Fletcher is absent. Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison is absent. Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries, and the minutes are accepted. Finally, we have the referrals of matters to our proper standing committees in the next cycle. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Second.
That has been moved and seconded. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll on referrals of petitions, communications, and reports.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich is absent. Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison is absent. Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson. Councilmember Johnson. I can't hear him.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
Aye.
That carries, and those referrals are made. So now, due to the amended agenda, we now turn to the order of new business. The first item is a reorganization of the council's standing committees and membership as a result of the local public health emergency. The intent of this restructuring is to streamline the council's process so that we can be more flexible in responding to community needs during the local emergency, while also continuing to transact the regular business of the city enterprise, and it creates a layer of transparency for mayoral actions undertaken under the emergency declaration, because the mayor will be giving us a weekly report in public of all of those items, giving us a chance to ask questions and hear directly from the mayor's office about those items undertaken under the declaration of local public health emergency. The proposed restructuring would reduce the number of standing committee meetings to two. The first committee, named the Business Inspections and Zoning Committee, would be responsible for handling the city's regulatory and quasi-judicial functions, licensing and inspections, and all land use and zoning applications, as well as those related agenda items and policy proposals. This committee would conduct its regular meetings on Tuesday afternoons at 1:30 PM. And the recommendation is for this committee to be chaired by Councilmember Goodman, with Councilmember Schrader as the vice chair. And the committee members who have all agreed to participate in this would include Councilmembers Reich, Gordon, Fletcher, and Ellison. These council members are all on those two committees and have a lot of experience with the quasi-judicial decisions that are coming through that committee, although we may see a lower number of those, given the current situation. The second committee is named the Policy, Government, and Oversight Committee, and it would be the primary working committee of the City Council. It would be responsible for handling all matters not specifically referred to the committee. Regular meetings would be conducted on Wednesdays at 1:30 PM. All council members will be members of this committee, and I would serve as chair with Council Vice President Jenkins as vice chair. We will also have two subcommittees that will report to their recommendations to the committee meetings. These subcommittees would be the Equity Subcommittee chaired by Vice President Jenkins and the Finance Subcommittee, which is like the sort of consent agenda that usually comes through the Ways and Means Committee, which would be chaired by Councilmember Fletcher. We had to give all of these committees different names from their typical standing committee, in part not to create confusion, but also because of the way that we track legislation and council action through our electronic LIMs system. So, for example, that's why the Race Equity Subcommittee is called the Equity Subcommittee. The second item is revised 2020 calendar showing the dates and times of all regular meetings under the proposed restructuring, along with some associated directions to the city clerk about handling the transition to this new operating structure. The intention of this would be that it would certainly go no longer than the duration of the local public health emergency. But like we are doing today, this could be subject to a council vote at any time as well. So I think as we go forward, we would want to see how this is working and make sure that we are meeting the goals of keeping our city business going, being flexible in a time of emergency, and creating transparency for the public. So I will move approval of both items and ask if there are any comments or questions from my colleagues. I'm just pausing to make sure I don't miss anyone putting themselves in queue.
I'd like to make a comment, Madam President.
Councilmember Gordon, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to extend my appreciation to the leadership team that's been working on this restructuring. I think this is incredibly challenging, and I appreciate that everybody has been so nimble, and you've come up with this solution. So I wasn't directly involved in crafting it, but I just want to send my appreciation to everybody who has been, and I think we're all here and we're ready to dig into it and make it work for us as long as we have to.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments? Seeing none, before I call the roll, I'll just thank each and every one of you for stepping up during this time. I know all of you are providing leadership and support to your communities that you represent in each ward, as well as coming together to support the mayor and his staff as they are triaging in this crisis and the urgency of the beginning stages of what we know may be a very long time of working together to support our community. So I just am inspired every day by each of you and your leadership. I know we've been working to create new mechanisms of communication and welcome your feedback about that anytime. And I just also want to highlight the work of our own staff teams who've been having a daily call to hear ideas, to consolidate questions, to coordinate together and share ideas. So they have just been all stepping up as well. So thanks to all of you. And with that, I'll just see one last time. I don't see anyone in queue. So clerk, please call the roll on approval of items one and two in new business.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon. Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison is absent. Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and those items are adopted. Now, we return to the regular order of business, beginning with the reports of our standing committees. We'll begin with the Economic Development and Regulatory Service Committee, with that report given by the Chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning, everyone. The EDRS Committee today is bringing seven items forward for approval. Item number one is an application for lawless distilling. Item two are the liquor license approvals. Item three are the liquor license renewals. Item four are gambling license approvals. Item five are operating conditions for Northeast Palace. Item six is a rental license condition for 3214 Queen Avenue North. And item seven is authorizing a master grant agreement with the State of Minnesota for employment and training-related services. I do want to note, Madam Chair, there are 119 liquor license renewals on today's agenda, which gives you an idea of how many businesses are trying to move forward and that we have in the city that are being severely impacted by this crisis. Hopefully, through this renewal, when the crisis ends, they'll be able to continue to operate. But the volume of liquor licenses that we have on every agenda is indicative of the number of people who are currently unemployed in the city, and I just wanted to make note of that today. I'll move items one through seven for approval this morning.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to speak to item number six, with the rental dwelling license conditions. This particular corner of Penn and Lowry is very challenging in Ward Four because we have an elementary school and a park next to a liquor store and a sober house, all on one corner. And we had some issues with the previous owners of this property, and we have been working together alongside business licensing, regulatory services, to be able to address this issue. And so I'm very grateful to the all the folks in regulatory services for their persistence with helping us be able to address this, as well as the new owners of that building, who have expressed a strong commitment to to cleaning up that corner, to ensure that the children and families who are also on that corner are not negatively impacted by that. So I just want to thank everyone involved with that and look forward to seeing more positive results. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? I will note to Councilmember Goodman's point that we have been working very diligently with many partners to try to bring supports as quickly as we can to all of the folks in our community who have been impacted by coronavirus, COVID-19 so far, and particularly the devastating impacts on our small business community and all of their workers. The mayor is hosting the second call with local businesses today that anyone can dial into. And we'll be sharing updates there, and I know many of you are also putting out updates for the resources that are becoming available in your newsletters. Our CPAD staff team is working hard with the mayor's office and the leadership team to continue to bring forward more resources as we find out more of what's coming through the federal bill and the state legislative actions that have come this week. So we will have our first formal update from the mayor's office next Friday, but in the meantime, there'll be lots of different ways that the supports and different resources are being communicated out. So thanks again to everyone who's helping with that effort. Does anyone have the details of the small business call handy?
No, Madam President, but I will, between now and another report, find that, and maybe we can add that to the announcements so that we can put it into the public record, if that's your wish.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. With that, I don't see anyone else in queue to comment on the agenda. Seeing no more discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison is absent. Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. The next report is from our Housing Policy and Development Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, President Bender. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is bringing forward nine items for consideration today. The first item is authorizing a contract with Property Solutions and Services, Inc. for Emergency Stabilization Program Rental Property Management. Second item is accepting grants from the Metropolitan Council Livable Communities Local Housing Initiative account, and this is grants for the Bloom Lake Flats and Build Wealth Minnesota. Third item is approving revisions to program guidelines for the 4D Housing Incentive Program. The biggest change here is that we would allow it to be applied to new construction of affordable housing meets qualifications. The fourth item is a resolution approving some refinancing conditions for the Seward Commons Financing Update. Mostly, this is extending current existing loans. Fifth item is approving the Housing Policy and Development Committee Work Plan. Item six is a resolution amending our 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan Action Plan, because we got more money than we had anticipated. The seventh item is authorizing staff to submit our next five-year consolidated plan. The eighth item is approving funding for the Elliott Twins Project, approving financing for that. And the final item is confirming the appointment by the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority Board of Commissioners of Abhi Worsami as the Executive Director of the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority. And I stand for questions on any of those and move the full committee report forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. Just briefly, I wanted to extend my congratulations to Councilmember Worsami for this new chapter in his career. It's been a blessing to call him a colleague, and and I look forward to supporting him through supporting this motion. Thank you so much. And congratulations.
Thank you. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to offer my congratulations to Councilmember Worsami. I've worked with him as a policy aide and now as a fellow council member, and just really want to extend my congratulations. And really, you know, this is a really critical time for public housing, for affordable housing, and so I am thrilled to know that the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority is going to be in really good hands with the commitment and dedication of Councilmember Worsami, so I'm happy to be able to support his work as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Palmasano.
I just wanted to chime in and echo those sentiments. Councilmember Worsami is is a friend of mine and someone that I've really enjoyed getting to know over these past six years on the City Council, and he will be sorely missed here in our day-to-day work, but I couldn't think of somebody better suited to the challenges ahead than him taking on this new role. So Councilmember Worsami, it has been great working with you, and best of luck, and know that you can rely on all of us for support and help as you transition into a new role.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else in queue. I will just add a few comments myself, and please feel free to chime in if you want to add your name. I'll echo many of the sentiments that we've heard and just note that, you know, Councilmember Worsami's leadership will be so important now with an agency that was already facing a lot of
Councilmembers, it appears that the president's connection has been severed temporarily, so I think we'll just take a brief pause, and the technical team will reach out to her and get us reestablished. So if you'll just hold on for a moment, we'll get started again here in a moment. Councilmembers, I've just heard from the council president. She's had some technical difficulties. However, she's asked me that while she is logging back into the system, if the Vice President, Councilmember Jenkins, could take from here. She'll be back as soon as she can. We are on consideration of the Housing and Policy Development Committee agenda. Council President was making remarks. If there are others, I think we could start from that queue. Council Vice President, I'll turn it over to you.
Casey, I'm sorry. I don't have the agenda in front of me. Can you tell me how to access it?
Council President, I'll send you a link right now.
Thank you. Are we ready to go?
Hi, everyone. I'm back on.
I would say that's a yes.
Yes.
My server went down or whatever. Okay. I don't know what happened while I was offline.
Madam President, we were considering approval of the committee report from the Housing and Policy Development Committee, items one through nine. You were making some comments at the time when the video shut down.
Okay, okay. Wasn't sure what had happened since then. I do see Councilmember Johnson in queue. Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to extend a congratulations as well to Councilmember Worsami. It's been great working with you, and I really appreciate having you as a colleague, and we wish you the best of luck in this new role.
On the HPD Committee.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon. Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye on all items except abstain on item number eight and nine.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison is absent. Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes on the report except for items number eight and nine, which have 10 ayes and two abstentions from Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you. Those items carry, and that report is adopted. The next report is from our Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Cunningham. Chair Cunningham, before you begin, I do have the information about the business call, and because it starts at 11:00 AM, I did just want to share that now. So this would be a citywide call to the business community today, March 27th at 11:00 AM, hosted by Mayor Frye. You can find out the information about that on the city's COVID website. And you can also do sessions online as well. So that is information I had and wanted to share quickly here before we moved on to the committee report. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee brings forward four items for approval today. The first is confirming a mayoral appointment to the Transgender Equity Council. Item number two is authorizing the grant application to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development for corrective lead-based paint hazard activities. Item number three includes six green cost share and STEM pathway program transfers. And item number four is authorizing an agreement with the University of Minnesota School of Nursing. for practicum and internship experiences. I move approval of all four items and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Cunningham has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Allison is absent. Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next is the report from the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one item being brought forward today by the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee, which is a gift acceptance from the East Isles Residents Association for fixed cameras on Hanepin Avenue. I will move that forward and stand for any questions.
Councilmember Kano has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Allison is absent. Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. The next report is from our Transportation and Public Works Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards 19 items for full council considerations. Item one is the Godward Street Northeast Resurfacing Project Approval and Assessment. Two is the South Phillips Residential Street Resurfacing Project Approval and Assessment. Three is the Basset Creek Watershed Management Commission Appointments. Those people are listed. Four is the Shingle Creek Watershed Management Commission Appointments, also participants listed. Five is a contract amendment with SJ Electrical Systems Incorporated for the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System. Six is a contract with Downtown Minneapolis Transportation Management Organization for ABC Ramp Multimodal Outreach Program. Seven is the contract with Metro Transit for Route 2 Transit Signal Priority. Eight is the construction agreement with the University of Minnesota for repairs on Bridge Number Nine. That's pure work. Nine is the license agreements for the Shid Motorized Foot Scooter Operations. Ten is the contract amendment with the MinDOT for rental parking lots under the I-94 Bridges. Eleven is the agreement with the Mini Ha Ha Creek Watershed District for programmatic maintenance. Twelve is the agreement with the Mississippi Watershed Management Organization and Minneapolis Park and Rec Board for storm sewer system construction and maintenance at the Columbia Gulf Course Park. Thirteen is the Mississippi Watershed Management Organization grant for the old Basset Creek Tunnel cleanout. Fourteen is the Sheridan Avenue South Alley Construction. Fifteen is the bid for the 18th Avenue Northeast Street Reconstruction Project. Sixteen is the bid for truck parts and services. Seventeen is the bid for Vineland Riverfront Lighting Retrofrit Project. Eighteen is the bid for the Batuminous Mixtures. And nineteen is the bid for the mixed concrete, and one is the sole bid and the other is the low bid. I will move all items unless people want to discuss number nine.
Councilmember Reich has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Allison is absent. Goodman.
No on nine. Aye on the remainder.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes on the report except for item number nine, which has 11 ayes and one nay.
Those items carry and the report is adopted. Councilmember Cunningham, I'll recognize you. I see you in queue.
I apologize, Madam President. I would like to update my vote. Aye on all items except for number nine.
Which, Madam Chair, if there is no objection, I can go ahead and correct the record to say number nine passes with 10 ayes and two nays.
Thank you. Is there any objection to Councilmember Cunningham's amended vote change updated? Councilmember Palmasano.
So that's not, thank you, Madam President. That's not any objection to Councilmember Cunningham's changing his vote, but I did want to say it didn't, my screen froze a little bit here. Regarding item nine on scooters, could I just say a few words?
Yes, please go ahead.
I know that we've already voted, but I do want to point out that things have changed so much in our right of way and the Public Works Team has been doing a great job at being really thoughtful as to how they can accommodate this very rapid change in all of our public space in our city. I do hope that as they move forward scooter contracts, that they're using that same lens and that same perspective. You know, at first I thought, well, gosh, how would these scooters possibly be operating in our space right now without like sanitary wipes attached on to the pole of them or something? How would anybody want to take these? But on the other hand, this is a piece of the mobility of our city, especially as as the bus schedule is running on Saturday schedules right now and there's a lot less bus service. I do see this as a way that people will be getting from point to point. It seems that it is played out that way in other cities that are on lockdown, that there is more scooter use, not less. And so I just hope that our Public Works Team, I do, I am encouraged by the work of our Public Works Team and I do expect that they will be bringing some of these considerations and thoughts forward because that is different than how this agenda item began its route through council. So thank you. I just wanted to share that context around the scooters.
Thank you. Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. I will add that kind of consistent with what Councilmember Palmasano shared. Yeah, we do have a new set of circumstances. You know, I will stand by the decision-making matrix that got us to the decision we had before us today on this item, but we certainly have the flexibility to adjust. We still are in somewhat of a pilot phase in these early years of the program. And certainly we would look at new information, new situations as we make our decisions. And we do, as a city and as the department, maintains that flexibility to make adjustments as we need on our terms. And we would do that in that spirit, particularly in light of some considerations and concerns that have been raised of late. We can evaluate those in the next few days as we move forward, again, in the broader context of our current situation, which is much different than when we sent the RPO. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I will note there was no objection to Councilmember Cunningham's vote. And I don't see anyone else. We had already voted and adopted that agenda. So the next report is from our Ways and Means Committee, presented by the Chair. I believe, I believe today, actually, the Vice Chair, Councilmember Fletcher, will be providing the report, but either one of you, please go ahead with the Ways and Means Report.
If there's no objection, Councilmember Worsami, I'll go ahead and read the report and take the opportunity to congratulate you on your new opportunity as we begin. So the Ways and Means Committee is bringing forward 20 items for council consideration this morning. The first three are legal settlements related to workers' compensation claims. The fourth is a legal settlement related to continuing health insurance coverage. And the fifth is a legal settlement in the case of Gregory Johnson versus City of Minneapolis. Item number six through 14 are contract amendments related to the public service building project. Items number 15 and 16 are settlement agreements with Century Link around their build-out and franchise fee. Item number 17 is the Comcast request for cable television franchise agreement renewal. Item number 18 is the 2020 Local Board of Appeal and Equalization Appointments. Item number 19 is the collective bargaining agreement with AFSMI, the Waterworks Maintenance Unit. And item number 20 is the collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters Convention Center Custodians Unit. I'll move all items for approval.
Councilmember Fletcher has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Sorry, aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Heard the dots there.
Aye.
Allison is absent.
Aye. I'm here.
Oh, Allison is present. Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and those agenda items are adopted. The next report is from our Zoning and Planning Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. The Zoning and Planning Committee will bring forward two items for approval today. The first is the approval of rezoning in Alley Vacation at 817, 819, 821, and 825 West Broadway Avenue, as well as 1828, 1830, 1832, 1836, and 1838 Bryant Avenue North. And the second is the approval of a rezoning at 2815 through 2833 13th Avenue South. And I'll move all for approval.
Councilmember Schrader has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Allison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnsons.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. The next order of business is resolutions and today we have an honorary resolution recognizing March 31st, 2020 as International Trans Day of Visibility. Are there any comments from council members? Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I do just want to comment on the resolution briefly and thank my colleague, Councilmember Cunningham, for collaborating on developing this resolution. And particularly, you know, in this time of global uncertainty, it's really important to lift up some of the most marginalized people in our communities and certainly our transgender brothers and sisters are a part of that. And so, you know, this resolution, this transgender day of visibility comes at a time when it's really, really deeply important for us to remember this segment of our community and not allow the transgender community, the broader LGBT community, and all of our vulnerable communities, the disabled community, undocumented immigrants, you know, low-income people who are really struggling during this time of just high unemployment and and, you know, public health concerns. And historically, transgender people have had challenges with access to good healthcare. And so, you know, hopefully bringing visibility and awareness to this community will lessen some of that discrimination and make all of the services and supports available to that community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to my esteemed colleague, Council Vice President Jenkins, for her leadership and collaboration. She spoke to quite a few points that I just want to uplift as well. While we are in a crisis like this, we know that the folks who are disproportionately impacted are folks who already are marginalized. I just want to say that I'm so proud to live in a city that even recognizes International Trans Day of Visibility. And it's important for us to really emphasize the visibility component of it. The trans community is so incredibly intersectional, folks of all ethnic and cultural backgrounds, different ability levels, different documented status. Like, I mean, it's completely across the board. And sometimes because of the fact that we're so intersectional, forget, folks just forget about the challenges that we face as a community. Folks in native and black trans folks experience disproportionately high levels of food insecurity as well as high levels of criminalization, high levels of housing instability and unemployment. And so as we are seeing the ripple effects of a crisis like this, the challenges, when we have one in four indigenous trans folks who are experiencing food instability, that is only further amplified. And so when we talk about equity and weaving that into all the decisions that we make, it's important for us to maintain the visibility of trans folks, trans and gender non-conforming, non-binary folks, maintain this level of visibility beyond just March 31st. But as we navigate all of the challenges ahead of us, when we make challenging decisions financially, what does it look like for us to ensure that when we talk about equity, it's truly equity for the folks who are living at the margin? So thank you, everybody, for supporting this and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you both so much for your leadership. And I know that here in Minneapolis and around the country and even around the world, both of you are important transformational leaders, not just because of who you are, but because of the work you do and how you work to empower the communities in our city. So thank you both for your leadership. That, I'll see if there are any other comments on the resolution item. Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll on the resolution.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Allison. Councilmember Allison. Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Allison. Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That item carries and the resolution is adopted. The next order of business is motions. There are several items currently in the queue of our previous committee structure for public hearings that need to be rescheduled or scheduled for the first time to match with the new committee structure that we adopted at the beginning of this meeting. Items one, two, and three are public hearings. Items one, two, and three are public hearings and ordinances that have been scheduled to be held at the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee. Those motions are to clarify that the hearings will now be held by the Business Inspections and Zoning Committee, although the time, date, and location have not changed. Item four is setting a public hearing for April 7th at the Business Inspections and Zoning Committee to consider several appointments to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Item five is setting a public hearing for April 8th at the Policy, Government, and Oversight Committee to consider the five-year Consolidated Plan and Action Plan. Item six is setting a public hearing for April 8th at the Policy and Government Oversight Committee to consider the appointment of Mark Ruff as city coordinator. Those six items under motions are all before us. Are there any comments from council members? Councilmember Gordon.
I just had a question in terms of how we're going to conduct the public hearings. Were, are we going to be trying to come up with some virtual way to accommodate that? Or will there be a place for people to go to actually speak to the committee members on that?
Thank you for the question. Mr. Clerk, could you please give us an update on where we're at with conducting public hearings?
Yes, Madam President, the clerk, the city communications, and the city information technology department have been working, as council is aware, extensively on a process not only to provide virtual meeting support for the council and its committees, but also examining the question of public hearings. We do not have answers at this point. I think we're closed. My hope is that since there are no meetings scheduled next week until Friday, when the council will reconvene this adjourned session, we'll have that time to finalize, test those details, deploy it, and have more information both for council and the public.
May I speak again?
Thank you. Go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember Gordon.
I really appreciate that, and I'll just note that if we get to the April 7th dates on that, and we haven't figured it out, we can always continue the public hearing until we are able to do so. But I think it's important that we keep communicating with ourselves and the public about what the solutions and what the strategy is to make sure we find something that we think we're comfortable with and also meets the letter of the law. So thank you much.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, did you want to add anything more at this time?
Thank you, Madam President. I would just say that there are, at a minimum, the opportunity that the public has to submit written comments or to email comments about those items. That avenue still remains an acceptable legal way for the public to contribute in a quote-unquote "hearing" environment in terms of actually presenting during the council meeting. That's the technical component that the team internally is examining right now, and we'll have answers next week.
Thank you. And I'll just note, for myself and Council Vice President, I know that we are planning to check in with each council member and committee chairs to talk through which items were coming up, not quite this quickly, but the ongoing pieces of work that I know many of us are hearing questions about, you know, ordinance work or longer-term policy or budgetary decisions. So we will be taking some time over the next couple of weeks to check in with each of you and the department heads to understand which things, you know, need a pause or a reschedule, and then how we might work together to accommodate some public engagement going forward, knowing that we're all committed to making decisions with the transparency that our constituents are used to having. So let's see. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender, and, and thanks for the update on the public hearing status. I've certainly been getting questions about that, about how that's going to work. I did just want to emphasize, as we're scheduling these things moving forward, I don't have judgments about any of the particular items moving forward. They may make perfect sense to keep on schedule, you know, that we're voting on here. But I do just want to encourage all of us and just sort of remind everyone of the spirit of the reorganization that we're doing today, that we want to be very conscious about staff time to leave everybody with the resources to respond to the emergency. And I know, you know, on the Finance Subcommittee, we're certainly going to be looking to, what are the things that don't have to come through right now so that we don't have to take staff time on, moving forward things that can wait and, and, you know, be conscious about just sort of efficiently moving things forward. So there's things that we need to act on. There's things that we need to act on even more urgently. And then, you know, if there are things that can wait, I just, you know, I hope that we do so that we leave everybody free to focus on the emergency at hand.
Thank you, Councilmember. I appreciate you noting that very much. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. So first, I'd say that the items that are being referred to the Biz Committee are things that were already in process well before the emergency hit, and they're not items that I believe would be hyper-controversial. But look at who's on the committee. You know, between the Vice Chair and I, we deal with public feedback and public hearings all the time, and we will not be bringing forward items that are hyper-controversial, especially probably, and Councilmember Schrader can speak to this, you know, very contested zoning and planning things. We're working with applicants in order to see if they can be willing to waive the 60-day rule. But the items that are coming up in the next meeting, and I realize there's a lot of them, are not, two of them are very administrative. Items two and three. Item one, a number of council members have been working on for a long time, and we obviously want to keep the trains moving on the Zoning Board of Adjustment. So I am the least technology-oriented person of anyone next to Casey, and I've been able to adjust to this. So I think everyone will be able to adjust, but I cannot only agree to written public comment for controversial items. That is just not something that makes sense. I'm uncomfortable with it. And I think everyone on the committee, look at who's on it. I mean, councilmembers Reich, Fletcher, Gordon, yourself, we're not going to allow controversial things to happen with feedback and writing only. And we'll work with the Council President and Vice President to ensure that we're on the right track. We do have agenda setting next Friday, so we'll have a sense of what's coming forward. And I'll personally call everyone on the committee to give you some background about the items, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment or discussion on these motions? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Warsani.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison. Councilmember Ellison. Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and those public hearings are set. Finally, we have the order of announcements. Are there any announcements from council members? Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. This is not an announcement, but we have noted that Councilmember Ellison has not been able to, to fully be able to participate in this meeting. And I just want to offer my condolences to him and his entire family as they mourn the loss of his grandmother and our Attorney General Keith Ellison's mother. And just wanted to publicly offer my sincere condolences to that family as they grieve the loss of their beloved mother and grandmother.
Thank you, and I know we all agree with that sentiment. I really appreciate you bringing that forward. Councilmember Warsani.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I was going to write, I was going to write a long flowery speech with regards to my exit from the city council. However, I'm just going to keep it very short and brief. I want to first of all thank my colleagues, especially those council members who, you know, who started off with Council President Bender, Council Pomisano, my mentor, Councilmember Goodman, and also, you know, all the other council members. You know, Councilmember Jenkins, who I've worked with for a long time and who I admire. And, and, you know, I thank you for your kind words and your leadership. And Councilmember Cunningham, who's a great brother and a friend of mine, I thank him as well. And all the council members, you know, Councilmember Reich, Councilmember Fletcher, Schrader, Councilmember Kano, who I started off with as well, wonderful council member. You know, the mayor and everybody, you know, I don't want to forget any names. I want to shout out Casey Carl. I know I annoyed him a little bit over the recent couple of months, but I want to thank Casey for all the work he's done. He's wonderful and, you know, a great asset to the city of Minneapolis. I want to also thank the finance staff, the interim, and hopefully to be, you know, city coordinator, Mark Ruff, who's a wonderful asset to the city as well, you know, and also my constituents and the public at large. It has been a great honor to be a council member of the city of Minneapolis. It has been very tough as well, but it's been a wonderful time. And I, and I, and I want to say that, you know, I know the city is in good hands with the leadership that we have in place. And I look forward to working with you in my new role. It's going to take a bit of time to adjust to things. And I want to, you know, I, I, you know, I will try to do my best to serve the people in public housing in our city. And I look forward to working with each one of you. And I'm getting teary-eyed, but my children are behind me, so I don't want to, you know, show any weakness. So thank you very much to everyone, and God bless. And also my condolences to Councilmember Ellison on the loss of his grandmother and to our state attorney, Keith Ellison. That's, that was big news, and may she rest in peace. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements from council members? I don't see any. Well, with that, I'll just say thank you so much, Councilmember Warsani. I think under typical circumstances, we would have also had more flowery speeches and resolutions. So I think we'll promise to do a better job of honoring this transition when we all can. And we're so excited for your leadership in this new role and appreciate you so much. I realize I did get cut off with some technical issues before, so I was halfway through talking about the transition. So I know that all of us are dedicated to supporting the residents of Ward Six and to supporting the staff in the Ward Six office, including the clerk and all of us on the city council. Under state law, we will be able to hold a special election for this Ward Six city council seat in August. The clerk has been working very hard to plan for that. I have had some conversations with our legislative delegation. Changing that date would require a law, a state, a change to state law. So I think there is some desire to expedite that and to ensure that Ward Six is represented on the city council during this emergency time. But that piece is out of our hands at the city outside advocating to our legislative delegation. So in either, in any scenario, I think just once again, want to reiterate our, our shared commitment to Ward Six and to making sure that folks there are heard and incorporated into our work. And then especially now during this really difficult time, fully supported. And I know Councilmember Warsani, in addition to all of the official work that you did as a council member, you have been a leader in the community and such a support to folks. I know we've joked that even walking to and from the train on the way to and from work, you were speaking with constituents and about all kinds of things, just all the things that were affecting their daily lives. So you will leave big shoes to fill, but we will do our best on behalf of Ward Six. I don't see anyone else in queue to speak. So with that, we have concluded our agenda for this meeting. With no further business to come before us, I would submit a motion to adjourn to April 3rd, 2010 in room 317 City Hall, as well as on this platform here, for the purpose of receiving a mayoral report related to the local public health emergency resulting from imminent health conditions caused by the presence of coronavirus disease, and ask the clerk to call the roll on that motion.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano. Councilmember Kano. Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Warsani.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and we are adjourned to April 3rd. That will be the mayor's report. And so thank you so much, everyone, for your work today, for your patience with our technology and flexibility, and thanks to the members of the public who've been able to join us remotely. Have a great weekend, and our thoughts are with everyone right now as we work together to get through this emergency here in Minneapolis. Thank you.